Oh, I'm past my time. We gotta get started. I'll call everybody to order. First order of business, we get Rhonda to do a roll call.
Okay. Mr. Hall?
Yes, I'm here.
Mr. Bakely?
Here.
Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mr. Artizom?
Here.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Holsinger? Mr. Postles? Mr. Shilo? Ms. Smith? And we do have a quorum.
Oh, we're good. Five and nine. That's better than that. Okay, first order of business is the approval of minutes for the 31st of August meeting. Again, these get sent to us by email. Are there any additions, corrections? Comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those, oh, yeah, okay. Are you getting these all around? I'm not.
Yep.
I'm not screwing you up, am I?
Nope.
Okay, good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Public comment?
We just sailed to 102 Spruce Street, Street in Holliesburg. I've not been asked to speak about this, but I feel compelled to speak on behalf of Gayesport residents. For the past 30 years, there's been an increase in the frequency and severity flooding in that area. They're shoveling silt out of their basements, replacing furnaces and hot water heaters. One case, they did all this, two weeks later, another flood, do it all over again. It's hard to believe how disappointing that can be. We have one case that I know of, the water flows through his front door. His front, his first floor, his basement's completely full, our front floor, first floor flooded also. Mostly, this neighborhood is elderly residents who live, many of them have lived their entire life. And each time that they have to replace all this stuff, their flood insurance premium goes up. And it's getting to the point where they don't know whether they're gonna be able to afford the insurance and they don't know what to do after that. They've been told time to time again, that's just because you live in a flood plain, and I do. But the flood plain is a flood plain because of the river, not because of the mini ditch which has increased in size over the last 30 years. They've been flooded twice by the river, once in 1936 and once in 1972. They can tolerate two in the last 100 years, but they can tolerate two, three times at some point. And the flooding's not from the river, and that's what the flood plain was for. It's been modified just in recent years because of the increased flow from the mini ditch. But that's all caused from development, okay? Originally, the mini ditch was dry in the summertime, and only flowed in the spring and fall. But it's the development upstream that has caused the problem. Many of the developers do not follow the stormwater regulations, and that's understandable. Stormwater facilities are unseen, so when someone comes in to buy, they don't worry about the stormwater that's underneath, they worry about how nice the place looks. And that's where the developer will spend his money, okay? And the problem then is given downstream, and it's downstream the whole way to the Chesapeake Bay. And municipalities who have not been real strict on the stormwater are now paying a penalty because now MS4 is required to take the silt, which is caused from flooding, out of the, out and we're spending a lot of money on silt removal, and that's gonna get more expensive, I think, or less expensive over the next number of years.
Okay.
One of the problems I see is that the developer has several computer programs to estimate the size of stormwater facilities. So they run, it takes only a few minutes for them to run the computers three or four different times, with three or four different programs, and they, what are they gonna pick? They're always gonna pick the one that has the smallest required stormwater facility.
All right, I guess the issue is, I'm not sure how that fits in here.
Oh, I, I.
And this is kind of, this is not our bag.
I understand that. I'll come to that in a few minutes. I wanted to make sure you understood what was happening with these people, okay? And you can tell these people that stormwater regulations will ensure that they don't get more from flooding.
This is, but this is a Holliesburg borough issue, not, right now, it's not our issue. That's what I'm telling you.
Well, it will be, it's coming up, that's why I'm worried. And I wanted you guys to be informed before it came up, thoroughly informed, so when it comes up, you can make a, hopefully, a positive decision, okay? So the, this, there's a group, the group, the families there are now focusing on mitigation. And they filled the town hall in Holliesburg and made some progress. Stifler-McCraw has applied for a grant to build a stormwater facility. The girls at the Conservation District have come aboard, and CBPG funds have been delegated to a program for this. Right now, the Steel Farm, which is immediately behind this neighborhood and upstream, is up for sale. The, a developer who is looking to purchase this, he has said right away, first thing he wants to do is to change the zoning, they'll come here to change the zoning. And that's my concern. And right now, it's a traditional neighborhood development. This has been studied years ago and has, it was decided that a, that this traditional neighborhood development would have the least impact upon the neighborhood. But to change that is gonna have a bigger impact on these people. And it would be a disservice to these people to change the zoning. And we're gonna ask you that when they come, that you consider the people in Gayesport and the flooding issue before you make a decision on changing the zoning, I think.
All right. Again, this appears to be a Holliesburg borough issue, not something, even when it comes down to a zoning change, all we're going to look at at that level is whether the zoning change, the request by the municipality, is consistent with what the county plan is. And so that remains to be seen. I mean, we can basically say, we don't know whether it's a good idea or not, but that's about, that carries no real weight.
Well, our experience is that you make a recommendation, and then the Holliesburg Borough Planning Commission, 98% of the time, follows your recommendation.
Well, we will, I guess, I guess, the only thing we can do at this point is wait and see what comes in, but I'm not sure.
Right, I just wanted you to be fully informed of what some of the issues were before it comes up.
Okay. All right, are there any other, are there any other public comments at this point? If there are not, I'll move on. Bruce, I guess it's your turn, because I think you have, probably have another meeting to go to.
Actually, today I don't, because the other two commissioners are both at other meetings for the morning, so the commissioners' meeting is canceled today.
So we've got you for the whole time.
You do. Last time you did this, you ended early for once, which parks do. Just a couple of things. Obviously, we're continuing on this, our budget liaison meetings, which end as of tomorrow. Dave had his, what was that, week before last, Dave?
I think it was, yeah.
And, which went very smoothly. And the other thing that is of interest, as we talk about broadband expansion, is the commissioner, the board has given an extension to Crowsnest on the one project, which we've been funding from American Rescue Plan funds. When this project's done, it will provide or improve service to roughly 70, 1,700 households or businesses. So it just is, I think their initial scheduling was, I thought was aggressive when they did it. It was aggressive. That's about it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, very good. Guess we can move on. It's now the McKenzie show, and we're down to the development applications. It looks like we've got four that require review by the, by the board. And I don't know what, Jamie, yeah, Jamie, McKenzie gets started.
Okay. So this first development is for the construction of a new 20,000 square foot storage warehouse in the, or on the existing Gardeners Candy's Facility campus in Tyrone Borough, to be utilized for storing ingredients and finished products. Additional improvements to the site include paved access drives, concrete paths for loading and unloading, and stormwater management facilities. Access to the proposed storage building will be through two paved drives extending from the existing facility entrance off of Adams Avenue to the concrete loading docks at either entrance of the proposed facility. The northwestern loading, oh, sorry, loading dock, which is right here, has a 12-foot wide paved drive aisle with a 17-by-30-foot concrete loading area, and that's suitable for vans and box trucks only, and there will be signage indicating that. And then the developer specifies that the eastern dock here would be utilized, or would utilize the existing ingress and egress that trucks already use for loading and unloading to the site. No additional parking is proposed at the site. While additional, or while existing parking facilities are incorporated at the site already, the developer should ensure that if the proposed facility would warrant higher amount of additional staff, that the parking at the site does meet Tyrone Borough's requirements for developments of that size. The parking, the existing parking was not included with the plan. Environmentally, our review revealed prime ag soils and presence of the 100-year flood plain on portions of the site, but because no development is proposed in the flood plain and because the land is already developed for industrial purposes, we do not anticipate any concerns, or environmental concerns with regard to the proposal. It's located in the Bald, South Bald Eagle Creek watershed. The plan includes the addition of underground detention sumps and combination trenches, which should help to offset any potential runoff as a result of the development.
Is this the existing building area back in here?
Yes, that's the parking for the existing building.
Okay.
The full plan set did not include any of the information for the existing building beyond what you can see here for this Y, it truly cuts off there. So I don't have any of the parking information for the existing building. But I did count, they have two large parking lots. I don't know their employment numbers. I did include in the letter that, as I said, if there was going to be additional hires for this expansion, then their parking should reflect that.
McKenzie, can you please clarify, is stormwater retention required by the borough of Tyrone? Or is it required by state regulation? You know the answer to that question, I don't wanna put it on, I'm trying to put it on the spot, but.
The specifics would be local.
It's specific to?
The specifics of what's required would be local.
Yeah.
Would be local.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you're asking.
So it's not like the state has stormwater regu, stormwater retention regulations? That's a local ordinance, that's a local requirement?
The state has what you might call expectations, but the requirements are local.
I see. Okay.
There are some questions in that area about, I know from the fact where the, how much drainage there is, because it's, this is up pretty much on the top of the hill. And there is drainage, there has been drainage issues when you go further down that industrial site towards the, towards the railroad tracks and the, the drainage down into that area. They've had some, some issues where they've had to open up some, like, used on drainage ditches and things to help the neighbors out in that one, little corner down there. But this is, this is maybe far enough away that it's, it's way up. I'm not sure whether the drainage is this way towards Adams Avenue or whether it's towards the, down the hill. It's just, they may be on the top of the ridge enough that it's not a, not an issue.
There's a stream that flows right here, it's something run, I can't remember.
Yeah, that's a, uh.
No, I can't.
Used to be that was the old, if, none of us are old enough to remember or, but there was an athletic park that was back there in the 30s that was run by, was part of the railroad. And there was a swimming pool, a golf course, baseball field, it's the whole nine yards in that old site that runs all the way back from there, back in the past where, if you're familiar with that, where Chicago River is and back into that area. And the trailer park was actually part of the golf course that sat there. So that, so that all disappeared back in the 30s, and it disappeared because the swimming pool was primarily fed by that stream, and that was the sanitation for the, for the swimming pool. So, but that's, it's just always been a question, it's always been this area. That's always been the industrial park in Tyrone. The question is where the drainage on the lower ends of it goes. But that is almost out on to Adams Avenue, it's almost, if you look, it's sitting right, almost, from the looks of it. Adams Avenue's right there, and it's the first turnoff you come off, you're gonna make the, it'll be into the story, into their stories. All right, do we want to, if there are no further questions, are there any additions or anything anyone wants to ask about that? Or if not, I'll entertain a motion to accept the staff recommendation, write a five on the agenda.
So I move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried, moving right along.
Number six on the agenda is for 3417 Route 764 LLC. This is in Allegheny Township, the address is the same as the business name, and this is the former site of Altoona Terminal Corp. This is, this proposal is for the construction of a 2,500 square foot office building with a 4,000 square foot garage space for truck equipment and parking. And this is on an existing gravel lot, as I said previously, Altoona Terminals. Additional site improvements include paved parking, stormwater management, and grading for a possible future 3,500 square foot garage expansion, which I put here. They included the garage expansion with the stormwater management and with the proposal, but the narrative only included grading for the first phase in that the expansion was only possible. Access to the site, I'm sorry. Access to the site is from a 24-foot wide paved bidirectional drive aisle that opens onto the proposed paved parking area. A concrete walkway is, a concrete walkway is proposed along the front of the office building. However, no additional sidewalks are proposed along Sixth Avenue. Generally, we would encourage the inclusion of sidewalks with new developments along a major corridor. However, given the absence of sidewalks in the immediate vicinity, we did not necessarily oppose the admission. However, if feasible, we did recommend the consideration of including sidewalks along the front of the property in order to better provide for pedestrian safety. Proposed parking for the site is outlined here in yellow, and that includes 10 paved vehicle parking spaces, including an ADA accessible space, as well as four gravel parking spaces that you can see here. And this should be adequate for the nature of the development, which is just a, it is a trucking business. Landscaping plans for the site included various shrubbery around the perimeter of the building, which should make for an attractive site. No lighting plans or photometrics were included with the plan. However, the developer should ensure that any lighting included or installed at the site would be shielded and directed in a manner to prevent glare onto neighboring properties and roadways. Environmentally, there were prime agricultural soils throughout the property. However, because the site is already developed for industrial purposes, currently it's just a gravel lot. No potential farmland would be converted or developed as a result of the proposal. It's located within the Beaver Dam branch of the Juniata River watershed. Proposed stormwater management improvements included reseeding the existing gravel lot here. This is all gravel, and the stormwater management included, like I said, reseeding this to be grass lawn, which should help to mitigate potential negative impacts on the watershed. I did include that the developer should ensure that all stormwater management facilities are designed in accordance with Allegheny Township's stormwater management regulations. And that's all I have for 3417 Route 764 LLC in Allegheny Township.
Okay. Are there any questions?
In Allegheny Township, do they require that the parking lots be paved?
Um, they do not for this, the nature of this business. This parking area with, uh, 10, there are 10 paved parking spaces here, and then this area in front of the garages is gravel, and there were areas for truck parking and additional parking here. This is all gravel, and this is the reseeded grass, but this here was the included paved parking.
My concern is gravel migrates. And when you have a storm facility, that gravel will travel into that storm system and cause problems. You know, in the city of Altoona, we always required, if you had any kind of parking where tires meet the ground, had to be paved because of that one big reason of gravel migrating. The gravel will migrate out on Sixth Avenue as well. And as far as the sidewalk goes, I really don't care that there's no sidewalks on either side. We, we should require it.
I did recommend it. I can only make recommendations, but I did include the recommendation to include sidewalks if possible. And for, um, the existing, I'm gonna try to go back to show the existing topography. This building, these two buildings have been, or not this building, but this building here has been since demolished. But this existing topography is gravel. A good portion of this will be paved, and this all will be reseeded as grass. The only gravel will be right in front of the garage, and that will be for entering. It's a trucking business, as I said, so it, I am assuming will be for storing and servicing the trucks and equipment. But I, as far as additional stormwater management, they did not include any details other than just the reseeding of the lot. So I can, um, if there's comments that you guys need to make about concerns for stormwater?
Well, I think, you know, we need to know what the stormwater is. You know, I mean, I really think that we should require them to provide us with some sort of stormwater information.
Well, let me ask this question. Does each township and each municipality, do they require to have a civil engineer as part of their administration or contracted civil, or not?
They're not required, I think they all do. What they all do.
So I guess this township over here can have no very loose stormwater regulations. This goes back to the original public comments. This township over here can have very loose stormwater regulations, and they can have all kinds of runoff. And this township over here can have very specific, you know, requirements that are controlled and designed by engineers, but the floodwaters, you know, can be, come from two or three townships over and flood other communities. I wonder how that gets resolved? Like, how, how does Holliesburg, for example, deal with stormwater runoff? That may be coming from, you know, flooding that's caused by two or three townships down the way, a river upstream. How, I'm just asking these questions rhetorically, I guess, to figure out, like, how all this is working? Because some, you know, Holliesburg itself, they can make stormwater regulations which prevents, you know, flooding, but that flooding is going downstream to other communities. Who's keeping, what's keeping Holliesburg from getting flooded by other communities?
That's been an issue, because I can know that the prime example in our area, in Tyrone, the area is that the Little Juniata River and the development upstream, it all ends up. And it's, it's impacted areas, build a business that are right along the river. The thing I've had about floodwater control or flood management is that these stormwater management plans, you know, they have all the, we have, and I speak as an engineer here, that some of this, if you have all these design tools that let you design these things on a piece of paper, and you come up with a stormwater design, a management plan, and you build it, but there's never any verification of whether that plan is working as advertised, or how do you do that? And so that's been an issue, one of the concerns I've had, is that you can do all this design on paper, but does it function as you, as advertised?
Well, it's supposed to.
It's supposed to, that's the thing.
What engineering's all about. And like, in this particular case, for example, there should be an engineer involvement. Because basically, what you're saying, it makes sense, okay? They're, they're basic, they're basically cutting, they're gonna get rid of half that gravel parking lot and only keep a small portion of, they're gonna reseed it, so they're actually reducing their impervious surface.
Right.
But somebody should be calculating that. There should be some kind of a, there's engineering principles here that say, like, okay, you can do this because, you know, you can put in more concrete now because you're cutting the impervious surface in half, and you're not creating any additional stormwater runoff. All this stuff can be done, but calculations and engineering. And as long as the developer does what is required, then it should, it should be good. And so, that's why I'm asking, like, is there any kind of state regulation? Or is it, like, for example, where the Army Corps of Engineer limit, you know, the amount of sediments and runoff and everything to the stream, and how, you know, who is, who is controlling that?
My concern has been, not what you're saying is, you know, I can do all the engineering, and I did this for 30-some years, not this particular thing. But the thing is, that my reaction has been that, okay, we can, as you say, the calculations are there, there's standards, you're supposed to be able to do them. The question is, to my knowledge, I'm not sure I've seen any data, anything, anywhere, on stormwater management that says these things work as advertised.
I trust the engineer.
I don't, I don't. I've been an engineer long enough, and I don't trust myself on some of this stuff. You know, and I know that it's, it's all basic.
It's all theory.
It's, it's theory.
They test it.
It's the old, it's the old trust but verify type thing.
I think that this has all been calculated, it's all been figured out in advance, and engineers do what they're supposed to do, and people, if everybody follows that. It's not that complicated a science. I mean, it's all done with, you know, rainwater, they, they know exactly how much flow goes across grass versus how much goes across concrete. It's all, this is all science. It's, it can be done. It is done. It's working, you know, the place. It's working, you know, the place, it's, this is like a, this is like, I consider this a rogue development, okay? It's like, these people are, they're doing some things out here, but nobody's, there's no checks and balances. They could build, if they built a giant gravel parking lot, someone could say like, oh, it's just gravel and all the water's going into the ground. But engineering wise, you would understand that there's more of a flow going across gravel than there is going across grass. So there's more runoff. If they added more gravel parking space, the water's gonna run off faster into the stream. So, I mean, in my mind, there should be, I don't wanna say state regulation, but there should be, there should be regulations all the way down the line upstream for, you know, developments that prevent downstream, you know, communities from getting flooded. I think this is done in others places. I don't know why it's not done in Pennsylvania.
I think it wouldn't trigger stormwater here because he's removing impervious cover. That's probably why there's no stormwater with this.
Yeah.
The impervious cover is actually going down, so it probably did not trigger the.
Yeah, but how, how was it graded?
I don't know. That's the problem. But he probably didn't trigger the stormwater because the impervious cover was reduced, so they didn't trigger stormwater.
Well, you can reduce the impervious cover, but if the drainage is going up the wrong way.
Right. I understand that.
From my.
We're dealing with regulations based on a nineteen nineties model.
All right, I guess we're, we're basically in the philosophy now and I'm not sure. We, I tend, my, my concern had been that on all these stormwater management plans, I've seen, I've seen engineers do all the development and all the design work and all the things they put out, but I've never seen anything that says, yeah, after we built this thing, it's working as advertised.
I think you can find, find reports that.
Okay, I'd be, I'd be happy to see that because I, you know, that's been.
They'll tell you that.
They're all, it's, and it's, because it's one of these things is unless you have a.
It hasn't been long enough. I mean, usually these things take years and years before you actually say, oh.
Well, and the other thing is, the other thing is it takes, if some, it's, it's a quality, like you said, it's water in versus water out. But it takes, if you're gonna measure the water out, it takes a point source or someplace where you can actually get a, get a measurement, quantify that. If it's, if it's a big area like this where it can run off all of the surface area, around the edges, uh, how do you verify that? And that's been my, one of the things I've looked at. I've said, I've said this before, you know, I've seen all these underground tanks or anything they put under parking lots and all those things and they, they've got all this theory behind it. But to me, nobody's ever looked at, I've never taken a measurement on, on the downstream side that says it works.
I disagree. I think there's half. That's why these regulations came from.
Okay, let's move on. Can we, can we have a, I guess the thing, and the sidewalks are kind of, sidewalks are kind of the same issue. To me, it's one of these things, it's kind of a catch twenty-two. If we, if we, if we say we're recommending sidewalks, but then they're gonna waive them because there's no sidewalks in the area, that's kind of like a revolving door. Because then they say, wow, okay, there's no sidewalks, we don't have to build sidewalks. But unless you, somebody has to start somewhere.
All right, so we, we probably need to be more clear about things like this where we don't really have anything on our comprehensive plan that says this is an active pedestrian zone. Obviously, this is not an active pedestrian zone. Well, maybe there is. There's residents next to it. I don't know.
This is across the street from the Sugar Run Plaza, if you're familiar with that.
Okay, so.
But, so, so there is the issue of, when it comes down to sidewalks, it's kind of one of these things, like I said, it's kind of a revolving door type thing. If you recommend sidewalks and the way, and the builder says, well, there's no other sidewalks in the area, so I'm gonna get a waiver, that's kind of self-defeating because you may never get sidewalks in. Because the next guy will say the same thing. It's all, nobody's putting sidewalks in, why do I have to put sidewalks in?
I, I think that what we do, we go after every property and say that it needs sidewalks. But what we should have is a plan, an act, a plan, this is an active pedestrian area, sidewalks should be here. This is an industrial zone. We don't really need sidewalks there. And we should have like something, so when we look at the plan, we can make a legitimate recommendation. Whereas here, it's like, I understand like Plank Road, okay? Plank Road's a good example, like, nobody ever required sidewalks. But little by little, they're being put in, but that's an active pedestrian area. It's in the middle of an active, you know, zone. We, we should have a trigger, a trigger that says, this is pedestrian area, sidewalk should be here. This is not, this is country, this is, you know, highway, this is, you know, this isn't. I mean, I, I don't, I agree that people should be able to access everything. They should be able to walk around and access, we should, we should have a total pedestrian, you know, oriented world, you know, where we can walk everywhere, but we can't, it's, it's not practical to do it everywhere. So I think that Mackenzie's suggestion that we would not be an objection to them eliminating the sidewalks is a, is a, is a good suggestion, you know? It's like, do they really, really need sidewalks there? And maybe we shouldn't be even, my, my point is maybe we shouldn't even be asking for them.
Uh, I guess, just in the interest of moving ahead and getting something done, is there any other discussion or questions about this, this item? Or can I ask for a motion to approve the staff recommendations and actions concerning item six on the agenda? Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, sign by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? I think there's a fair amount of philosophical, not philosophical issues, but other issues that are a ballot that need to be me addressed, but I'm not, on individual projects, they kind of fall through the cracks, unfortunately. So, moving right ahead.
Okay. Number seven on your agenda is for European Motor Cars' new garage in Blair Township. This is located along Chimpy Rocks Road. And this is for the construction of a forty-four hundred square foot auto repair garage owned by Francis and Deborah Knab. This is the current site of European Motor Cars', which is located right here. So, additional site improvements also include gravel parking and stormwater management. Access to the proposed site will, okay, access to the proposed garage will continue to be through the existing ten, it's a ten-foot wide gravel drive off of Chimpy Rocks Road. I can go back and show you the aerial. This is the only entry and exit point to the property. And that remains current with this plan. Parking at the site appears to consist of six additional gravel parking spaces in addition to the existing gravel parking that's available, which appears to be adequate for the nature of the development because it's, it's a auto repair garage where it appears people drop off their motorbikes or their vehicles and have them repaired. No landscaping or lighting plans were included. However, the developer should ensure that any landscaping included at the site is in accordance with Blair Township's regulation, as well as any lighting installed. Because it is a residential area or there's other residences around, any lighting installed should be shielded and directed in a manner to prevent glare onto existing residents and roads, or existing properties and roadways. The site is located within the Beaver Dam branch of the Juniata River watershed. Proposed stormwater management includes underground infiltration and detention masons for the, if you can see here, this area, sorry, this is not working super well. This area will remain as gravel and the proposed repaired garage will be right here. So, the stormwater management will be there as well. And no environmental concerns for the site, not located within the floodplain, no wetlands, steep slopes, or ax soils. That's all that happens.
Is this a private residence?
It is. The homeowner lives here and operates the business out of this garage.
Okay, so it's his business. It's, it's on, okay. And so, this, this driveway.
Would you like me to go back to the aerial?
Well, that driveway, I guess there's no issue that it's not a flag lot or it's not separated or anything. It's just all part, it's all one big lot?
Correct.
Okay. And he's buil, he's building, essentially, he's, he's expanding his business on his, on his back, on his back lot, is basically what he's.
Correct.
Okay. Are there any questions or? If there are any questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the staff actions and recommendations for item seven on the agenda.
So.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, sign by probably saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Moving on.
Okay. Number eight on your agenda is for the Acera Furnas Estate redevelopment. And this is located in Greenfield Township. The property is currently owned by Quarry Road LLC. The location is, if you're not familiar, this is Dunning's Highway and Quarry Road right here. The developer for this site is Sheets. And the plan is to convert this barn here into a private meeting and event space for Sheets employees and add a sixty-six hundred square foot addition for culinary preparation, as well as a, an ADA accessible entrance. And to convert the existing mansion here into a bed and breakfast, also for out-of-town Sheets staff. The other outbuildings that are on the site are currently remaining in the plan. There's a lot here, so I'll go over it all. So, as I said, this proposal is for the redevelopment of the historic Acera Furnas Estate. And additional improvements at the site include paved parking, walking paths, and stormwater management facilities. The, oh, included with the addition, the sixty-six hundred square foot addition to the barn for the meeting and event space, they also included a rooftop deck, outdoor pavilion here, as well as some outdoor pavilions that you can see throughout the site. And.
Okay.
I believe that's it. Okay. Demolition of existing fencing, some landscaping, and only one of the small outbuildings are proposed prior to the redevelopment. But access to the site will be through a new twenty-six foot wide paved bidirectional drive here off of Dunning's Highway with twenty to twenty-five foot wide drive aisles throughout. So this is how you would access the meeting and event space here, right off of Dunning's Highway. And these are all bidirectional throughout. Additional access to the site, and this would be for the bed and breakfast, or you could still access the meeting site through here, all of the roads connect, would be through a twenty-two foot wide paved bidirectional drive off of Quarry Road with twenty to twenty-five foot wide drive aisles throughout as well. Proposed parking for the development is outlined in yellow. That includes three separate paved parking spots, or paved parking lots. A total, or a fifty-four foot long shuttle bus parking and loading area, that's right here. And a designated gra, and designated grass overflow parking, which is located here and here. I will, um, yeah. So, site plans include a hundred and thirteen paved spaces, as well as five ADA accessible parking spaces. And the overflow parking proposed in the designated grass areas can hold a capacity of ninety-three additional cars. Paved five-foot wide walking paths are proposed throughout the property. As you can see here, that's what all these narrow little paths are. And those are, those should improve connectivity and accessibility throughout the site because they are the paved five-foot wide ADA recommended paths. But also, the nature of the property is very agrarian, it's very historic. So to encourage kind of being outside was the goal here, which is why they included outdoor pavilions, the walking paths, and the landscaping. Landscaping provided for the site included the landscaped infiltration berms and meadow seeded rain gardens, which are here and here. And, as well as various trees and shrubs throughout the site, which should not only make for an attractive site, but improve overall bio retention capacity of the soils. No lighting plan or photometrics. However, the developer should ensure any lighting is shielded in a way to prevent glare onto the roadway. Environmentally, the one hundred year floodplain, as well as wetlands, were found on a portion of the site located here at the rear. I believe you can actually see the wetland delineation in the very top. But that's where the wetlands are. And no development is proposed in areas delineated as floodplain or wetland. So, these features should not pose any immediate concern with the development. The site is located within the Frankstown branch of the Juniata watershed. In order to help mitigate the increase in stormwater runoff as a result of the proposal, the developer has proposed the inclusion of the landscaped rain gardens, as well as landscaped infiltration berms, which once again should help offset runoff at the site, including, or according to the post-construction stormwater management report. Questions?
Is the Pennsylvania Historical Museum commission involved in this at all?
Not from what I have gathered, based on the plan. And I have not seen anything about them. I checked the databases for historic registries for the property and I don't think the property is in any historic registry. So, I don't think they can be, take action unless it's like a federally registered, like historic place. Does that make sense? Like a, on the national, is it the National Register for Historic Places? Yeah.
There was an archaeological study done on that whole site when they developed the industrial park initially. And there's a booklet that was published. They were required to publish and make public a booklet on all the history, anthropo, anthropological history on the site at the time. It goes back, it has Native American artifacts all the way up to probably something like this. But it was done when they first, when Sheets first went out there. So, if this was included in that, that would be in that booklet.
Okay. Are there any further questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the staff actions and recommendations for item eight on the agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, sign by probably saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Okay, moving right ahead. Item nine on the agenda is items which were done at staff level and do not require, did not require a formal review like we've just completed. These are items that have been sent to the board members via email for review, questions, comments, et cetera, that should have been addressed to Mackenzie. So, any of, any items that, on any of these three, three items that you have questions about now, now is the time to ask Mackenzie. If there are no further, if there are no questions, I will entertain a motion to approve the staff actions and recommendations and letters for item nine of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Don't move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Objections? Motion carried. Okay. Wow. I guess we're moving on, and there are on the, on the municipal clearinghouse issues, there are no items that require, required review. Or, oh yeah, we got one down there, I guess, on the bottom, item ten. Got reversed, you reversed it. Eleven, you reversed the, reversed the order, that's all. Normally you'd do ten before, eleven before you do, do ten, but that's all right.
It's a different category.
No, okay, different review, okay. Again, these are again, these are issues that did not rise to the level needing a full staff level review presented at the meeting, at this meeting. These typically are things that are letters of support, minor changes to ordinances, letters of support for grants, permits, et cetera. So these again have been sent to the board members via email for your concerns and comments. So are there any concern, any questions concerning any of the items listed in item ten of the agenda by the board members?
For the purpose of the public, could we identify some of these acronym, or what does N B D E S stand for?
National Pollution Discharge Elimination System.
Which is?
And that's for, usually if you have a, for example, some of these are for sewage. If you have a personal sewage system wound property, there has to be a discharge. So that is what the N B D E S permits are for. That's what the Logan Township, you know me early. You can see that's what that would look like. N B D E S, Water Quality Management Part Two, that's for a single residential sewage treatment plant. Some of the.
P W S?
Uh. Water supply, public water supply. Sorry, I will include the full, um, names.
It's okay, I just, just.
No, that's, that's good, in fact, I will.
None of this applies to stormwater management though, correct? None of these issues?
Um, I, there were no issues in the review for any of these. We did receive a full plan set. I'm trying to be very careful, I word this because it's a very large, uh, it is the Logan Boulevard Water Main Relocation Project. They sent us the full plan set for that, for review for that project. That is not the permit that's included on here. That will be on October's agenda. If you would like me to review the full Water Main Plan Set for you for the October agenda, I can. This permit is just to, um, just that they, this was just that the plan, the project is consistent with our comp plan. This is not our actual review of the, or an environmental review of the plan. But I can, they did submit the plan set, as I said. It's rather large. If you would like me to review it for the next meeting, I can. If not, typically permit items like that are intergovernmental and stuff that sends out via email. So that is a hundred percent what you think would be most appropriate for reviewing a project like that.
No, if that, does that Logan Township or Logan Boulevard plan include work going on in Holidaysburg?
So the plan is multi-municipal. It is Holidaysburg, or City of Altoona, Allegheny, I believe Allegheny Township, Frankstown Township, and Logan Township.
You have no offhand if that plan includes the removal of the street trees on Logan Boulevard going through Holidaysburg?
As far as I know, there is no actual, like, landscape removal being done along the whole corridor. The only plans, it's all temporary utility plans that are included. So any temporary utility connections that have to be made or any excavation, there's a lot of exploratory excavation. That's suggested for finding utility lines. So that just involves tearing up the lane, like the lane of the road, but nothing involving the median, nothing involving street trees or any of the properties along the roadway.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Are there any questions on any of the items listed in item ten of the agenda?
Point out Houston Township there. That is the first of potentially several like that. Those stand pipes are for fire control. They're basically, you dip the end of the pipe in the river and you have an instant hydrant. That is an element on the action plan and the hazard mitigation plan. Houston Township just happens to be the first one moving forward for it. You'll likely be seeing metropolitan clearinghouse grant requests coming through for hazard mitigation money to put those in.
So the request that I received from Houston Township for that project specifically was asking Blair Planning to review the proposed, um, the dry hydrant project. And just for, the same as the rest for comp plan conformity, it's not for a permit or anything. But just to get that letter to say this is consistent with our comprehensive plan. This is mentioned in our hazard mitigation plan as an action of high priority, which it is. And that will help them secure, potentially secure funding for the project moving forward.
And I assume this is something that we're pursuing grants for? Okay. All right, if there are any further questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the staff actions and recommendations and letters of support for item ten of the agenda.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. Moving right ahead. Oh boy, here we go.
Okay. Number eleven on your agenda is for Woodbury Township's subdivision and land development ordinance update. It looks like it's a massive update. It was an update to the full ordinance, but the update is not extremely robust. Changes to, I'm just gonna read what's on the screen. If you have any questions, I did bring the ordinance here, so I can read you what's on here. Updates to Article One include the addition of limitations of liability of the township on subdivision and land development plans, essentially saying the township is not liable for the develop, let me read this exactly actually. It says, "The grant of a permit or approval of a subdivision and/or land development plan shall not constitute a representation, guarantee, or warranty of any kind by the township or by any official or employee thereof as to the advisability or practicability of the proposed use, nor shall any such approval represent any warranty as to the accuracy of the information provided by the developer."
It's a legal disclaimer.
Yeah.
Okay.
We ain't responsible.
Okay, I'm just letting you know that was.
Just because of the approval doesn't mean it works.
So I'm just letting you know that that is an addition, a new addition entirely. That was something that was included that wasn't there previously. Changes to Article Two include the addition of language and definitions for, uh, definition, or the entries of appointing authority, land owner, land development modifications, preliminary plan and sketch plan, public hearing, subdivider, subdivision, and waiver. Changes to Article Five include the addition of design standards for stormwater conveyance in driveways and roadways, stormwater damage provisions, and the requirement of erosion and septication plans for all developments involving any grading and excavation. So to answer what you had mentioned earlier with one of the developments, even though there is no, it didn't trigger the stormwater for that site, because there would be grading at the site, it would trigger stormwater in that case. With this, uh, proposed change. Changes to Article Eleven include the addition of grant of modification and waiver information for relief from requirements. And changes to Article Twelve include the addition of language on the enforcement of the ordinance, as well as any penalties involving.
I guess when you're talking about, I am fine there, Pat. What I'd like to see is somebody, if they've made changes on these either stormwater management stuff, I'd like to see somebody down at the end of the driveway with a bucket verifying that it actually worked.
I think they said when they, they wanna change the article for stormwater damage provisions, but are they changing the articles for stormwater design?
Yeah, that's.
Or is there already stormwater design requirements? Are they only concerned with stormwater damage?
There are already provisions, provisions for stormwater design. This is specifically for driveway and roadway stormwater damage. And, sorry, I'm trying to find the entry. This is for private, private driveways shall not alter the grade or construction of the township road and shall not allow drainage water to enter the township, onto the township road. Yeah, just driveways should be graded in construction in ways so the drainage shouldn't endanger the roadway. That's the language that's included.
Keep your water to yourself.
To prevent the damage to the existing stormwater.
Yes, it's again, we ain't responsible type thing.
And, um, this included all street construction should be inspected by the township contractor, shall notify the township at least ten days prior toward the commencement, or to the commencement of construction. All drainage facilities and underground utilities within the road right of ways should be, I'm so sorry, are to be placed prior to approval of the subgrade. It's highlighted in gray and written in black, I'm so sorry, it's so hard to read. But that's what the inclusion was about stormwater protection.
Okay.
For their, it's for their roadways.
Are there any questions or questions concerning item eleven of the agenda about the updates to the? Saldo, that's for, for Pat, myself, and all those, what is that?
Subdivision and land development ordinance.
Okay, okay. Okay. Are there any other questions?
From my perspective, maybe they should be responsible for some of these things. So can we, we should be voting no, we don't want them to, you know, alleviate their responsibility for certain things including stormwater damage and things like that. I mean, I, I don't really think I'm for, I wouldn't, are we voting to say that we approve or for this?
Um, once again, these are for whether or not these are consistent with our comprehensive plan. And generally, we recommend more regulations for stormwater, more regulations since, like, because we want to, I guess we better regulate that. Um, so I don't think this is necessarily making it less restrictive. But I do think, um, as you said, the township to
Wash their hands of their responsibility, you know, is that consistent with the comprehensive plan? Would we want townships to be more responsible for these types of things? Wouldn't that be more consistent with our comprehensive plan? That township should take responsibility for this.
I don't, I don't think that's the point here.
That's not the point.
No, they're, they're trying to protect themselves from the private sector doing stuff that affects the public sector.
Okay.
And that's why they put that disclaimer in there. Cause if something would happen, then they would go after the municipality. Even though the municipality only approved the subdivision, you know, and what that person did on their property that caused the damage.
Right, okay, I understand.
Okay, if there are no further additions, I will entertain a motion to approve the actions of the staff and the letters for the, the changes to the Woodbury Township ordinance. So do I have a motion to that effect? I have a vote.
I make a motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carried. I guess you get a break now, Mackenzie, and we turn it over to Dave. I guess the one thing, Pat, I'll tell you, you talk about engineering design, well, I, all right.
All right. We had a few on altogether Altoona, on their kitchen table discussion, they also asked for any final, sort of confirmation level for these first couple here. You'll see in your packets, a sheet that looks like this, the core values and the planning principles. If you remember a couple months ago, we went through the exercise, the first kitchen table conversation. Oh yeah, there's lists of words and things like that. This is the result of that discussion. And as we go down here, the core values that were identified for the city, if you remember, we had two sets of words there. Legacy values to carry forward, the top three that came out of the kitchen table discussions were resourceful, self-reliant, and gritty. That's the three words the city saw itself as, that we went carrying forward. And then aspirational values, this was the second list of words. If you remember, the list are actually the same. One was looking back the last twenty-five years, the second is looking forward twenty-five years. So the words that came out, creative and entrepreneurial, sort of balanced right out. Inclusive and bold. So, you see a little paragraph there, sort of, sort of puts it into prose as to what exactly is going to happen and how, how we're gonna face those values into the plan. So that's, that's what that is. Any comments on those? They're, they're basically just looking for a quick reflection as to whether or not this seems accurate or not. If you have anything to say, that's fine. The other side was the planning principles. You can see it says the rules that govern what we do and help us translate our value into action. So basically, these come down to, it's sort of a decision-making framework for the next ten years for the city. So these are the principles that came out of the discussion. Want to have skin in the game, want higher standards. This is somewhat new, but it did come out pretty strongly that we're going to embrace risk-taking and taking new approaches. So the same old, same old may start giving way to some, some new ideas. And then protect and strengthen Altoona's inherent assets. So there's, like, one thing that we often overlook, we take for granted, is the natural resources around. I've said a number of times, people say there's nothing to do around here. Just look up, you can see all green space all around, things to do. We have a very large vibrant art scene in Altoona that people tend to overlook. It's a city this size, and the art scene that we have, just, it's a little engine brewing. It's something that we really should embrace, take advantage of, and support. So those are the assets, are types of assets that are being looked at there. I'm trying to ask if there's any comments on those four. Now that we move into the big things, this is C Z B doing the, doing the plan, the same group that did our county comp plan. If you remember the county comp plan, we have for each county, there's about half a dozen big things that we focus on. So these are the top issues that came out of, out of the kitchen table conversations, steering committee, and just general conversations that come out. So they, they broke down into two basic elements. We'll go with the first one. We'll go with the first one first. Uh, we can sneak preview of the second topic, so you can see where it's going. Um, but the first one, it was better places and public spaces designed for people. And the three big things under there were stronger, more vibrant downtown, and that bubbled up. Safer, more beautiful streets. Um, this is basically speaking to a, a more modern expectation of what urban form should be. Um, vision zero would play into here. Uh, we actually have a vision zero um resolution that guides our, our own operation. Vision zero, for those who uh aren't aware, is the aspiration to reduce um fatalities on our highways to zero. Obviously, we have a human factor involved. It's, I, unfortunately, an unattainable goal, but it is a, it's a vision, a goal that we have to uh, to try to guide our decisions. Frankly, if we're, we're aiming for zero, um, it's only going to make things safer. But that also includes other things and uh under the complete streets umbrella, approving our sidewalks, making sure those crosswalks, pedestrian ends on the traffic lanes, uh bicycle accommodations, uh whether it's just simple sharrows, um bicycle accommodations at businesses so people can ride their bike to McDonald's and if they have a place to lock, if it's not blocking the door, not blocking the handicap access, which so often has, because that's the only post that's available in the parking lot. You gotta tie the bike to the, the handicap sign and then it's in the wheelchair. So making a combination to that, the city has had um provisions for both sidewalks and bicycles on the bus for twenty years now, uh but to make them a little more available, more more known. Um, I have noticed in the last two or three years, basically since the pandemic started, um, that the bicycle facilities that have been installed over the last twenty years are being used a little more frequently, a little more visibly. I had blood work done yesterday and I do not do well with blood work. And I immediately needed food in me for the fasting blood work. The hardest appointment they had was nine o'clock, watching McDonald's on Pine Grove. And there's that little U-shaped bike rack out there, there were three bikes parked at, at nine thirty in the morning.
They all work there.
And they all work there, but it's being used is the point, you know, we, we, we do see people using bicycles now.
The sidewalks are an issue. They're actually recommending that there be a sidewalk replacement program, and that's never, never landed in Altoona. Property owners are responsible for keeping it clean, but not responsible for repairing it. And the city won't, won't put in the investment into repairing it.
Yeah.
Yeah. But this is the public space. So if you look down some of the streets, um, it's been said a number of times, um, oh, that, that neighborhood's blighted, that neighborhood's in bad shape. And if you actually would stand at the beginning of the block and go like this in your vision and block out the public space of the block, the block improves. It's the public space that's actually causing the blight in some cases. Bad curves, um asphalt that's up to the curves and it's just allowing people to spill their cars onto the sidewalks. The sidewalks themselves are broken down, made of horrible materials. Um, if it's a brick sidewalk or an asphalt sidewalk, you got grass growing up everywhere, that type of thing. And that's some of what causes the deterioration in the neighborhood. And the other thing that bubbled up was first rate well-connected parks and trails. Uh, this is actually starting to come up countywide, uh but it did come out very strongly in the city. The city actually has a good park system, you know, in place in terms of the sites where they are and all like that. Um, it's time to modernize them. They were, they were built on a uh mid-century model from the last century. Uh, there's a lot of baseball and sports orientation, which is not a bad thing, it gets people active. Um, but it's time to reevaluate which sports, which equipment should be in each of those parks. We really need a baseball field in each one. Um, that, those kind of questions need to be asked. So those are those type, those are those three, um, for the first group of big things. The second group is um related to it, uh, it looks more at the private sector, uh, but it's kind of the same concepts. Neighborhoods with pride and opportunity, uh, taking the form of healthy neighborhoods, becoming even healthier. Uh, that involves reinvestment, um, homeownership that is stable. Uh, the city has enjoyed fairly stable homeownership rates um over the decades, especially when we compare Altoona to other third-class cities. Um, we, we tend to be at one-third, two-thirds split, the favor being toward the homeowner. Um, a lot of other cities uh push sometimes eighty percent rentals. And uh, there's nothing wrong with rentals inherently. The issue tends to come in with rentals is the people come in and they go out and they have no vested interest in the property and the property slowly deteriorates as a result. Rental properties have their place, of course, they're needed. There are people who either don't want to own a home, can't own a home, and recognize they can't own a home. So we, we don't want to come down hard on rentals, but we want to make sure we, we maintain that, and we balance the, the uh, the investment in the city there. Diminishing levels of light, um, volume of property showing signs of distress is falling. And that's, that's an important point to drive home. They did a, a housing assessment on the entire city. It's going down. There's a, the, the, the amount of light in the city is actually starting to go down. Um, and this parenthesis is also important, especially in the visible areas. So the, the efforts of the city over the last number of decades to, to get on top of the light um have been successful. Altoona's blight issue is also somewhat unique compared to our third-class cities. Um, we have spot light here, 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 or here. You might get half a block once in a while, uh but we don't get the massive full blocks or full neighborhoods of light like so many other areas have. And part of that is because the city's right on it. When something starts to deteriorate, they get right on it and try to take care of it before the first pick light of property, stretch them to on either side, stretch them to on the other side. And if it goes out that way, then, oh, we might have a problem over here and it's too late. So we do have diminishing levels of light. We want to see investment in these blocks. Um, and when, when one homeowner makes investment in their property, the same thing starts happening. It, it, it starts spreading out, he's taking pride in my property. You know, he did a pretty good job with that, but I might be able to show him up a little bit. And uh, and so some of that, giving up on the Joneses type things. Uh, and then we have the expansion of appealing affordable housing options. Uh, this again, has been an issue for quite a number of years. Um, our county comp plan calls it the missing middle. Um, we can give you all the single-family detached homes in one, and we can give you some high-rise apartment-type living over here. And if you want a four-class apartment apartment, so, yeah, that'd be get back to you on that one. Um, it's, it's just, I'm not gonna say there's none out there, but there's so few out there that as soon as one comes up, it's off the market. It, it happens very quickly. The other issue with missing middles, there's, there's two concepts around missing middle. The other side of it is the missing middle income bracket uh with our housing. You get to about a hundred twenty-five thousand, up to about two hundred fifty thousand. Again, I'm not gonna say there's none of it out there, but as soon as it's on the market, it's gone. You get some areas, and it's true in the city, but there's also areas out in the county where you almost have to know somebody who knows the guy that's gonna sell. And you get hit, you get to him before he gets the thing on the market and it's sold before he even gets on the market. Um, that's how tight that bracket is. The issue there is now, we've got all these people that couldn't afford something in that, that area. So they now have a choice. They can either buy down or they can go and stress their finances and uh make their, make their lives a little miserable by reaching for something they really can't afford. Um, so they tend to buy down, which then puts the people who normally will be able to afford that, forces them down and it causes a squishing effect in the market. And it, it has an impact on our lower-income um housing needs. Also, we also have the tendency that people who can't afford higher tend to buy a little lower than what they can. The rule of thumb is you take your annual income multiplied by three, and that's the, that's the housing you can afford. Um, we don't do that here. We tend to buy down and go further. And again, that has that squashing effect and it pushes the lower-income people um out of the market. And it results in low-income housing problem that would, could be alleviated if we could get that middle bracket uh back in there. Again, middle bracket is income and type of housing, it's, it's both. So those were the big things that were, that came out of the first round. Um, and like I said, they're just, so lessening any further comments that you may have, um, if there are any, um, that's fine too. This, this will form the basis on how we approach developing the pools and all of that. We have a second kitchen table conversation. It asks several times to emphasize uh the underlying portion in that first paragraph on the right column. These are fictional. They sound very realistic, but they are fictional. Keep that in mind, no matter how real this may sound to some people, this is fictional. So we have part A, and there's a small part B at the end where we, where we frankly put a horn deeply. Three private, four private developers have proposed three very different significant projects in the city of Altoona. Over the course of the past six weeks, each of the following development proposals has been released to the press with the hope that they will find community support prior to the formal submission for the appropriate governing bodies. Please review these proposals one at a time. As individuals, describe why you would say yes or no to the proposals and then as a group. How many participants said yes or no to each proposal? So I'm gonna take each one at a time. I'll go through them, decide whether you're gonna say yes or no to it and then why. There is a question on the no. If you answer no, there's a second question as to what would move you to a yes. So we need to think those through. So the first one is infill housing downtown. Private Development Partnership, uh, they're in Blairton Center County, is looking to capitalize on three target markets and seek brand-new housing versus downsizing seniors with healthy retirement savings. Second are healthcare professionals at UPMC Altoona, and the third is young couples with two incomes and no children. These markets are served by a few rehab buildings in or near downtown and by some new developments tailored to seniors, but there are no newly-built housing units for these markets in the downtown core. So here's the project. To fill the gap, the developer has their eye on the elongated parcel along Twelfth Avenue between Fourteenth and, I think that means Fifteenth Streets. Um, the parcel is owned by the Altoona Parking Authority. So this is the long parcel next to Blairton Senior Services, approximately Gables Building. It operates a surface parking lot with spaces for nearly one hundred monthly permit holders. It is across the street from the Forest Downtown Center, one block from Heritage Plaza and the Emergent Vitality along the Eleventh Avenue. A L T communities would build a four-story mixed-use building on the site. The upper three stories would contain ninety-four market-rate rental units with no income restrictions, ranging from one-bedroom, one-and-a-half-bath bathroom units to two-bedroom, two-and-a-half bathroom units. The first level would have covered parking for tenants, a lobby fronting Twelfth Avenue, and a small retail space at the corner of Fourteenth Street. The total development cost is estimated to be twenty-seven and a half million dollars. A lot of the stuff, just so you can see which one they're talking about here. See the cathedral in the upper center there? Um, and the arrow is the parking lot, that's the uh, again, the Parking Authority parking lot. The building right in front, cathedral there, um, sorry, it's basically is the Blairton Senior. Um, or not the Blairton, the Gold Gables Building, sorry. That's, that's the site we're looking at here with this. What we have to give, so each of these we have to give and, and what we get. Developers will need assistance to make this project work. Without help, the development costs would require average rents of twenty, two thousand four hundred fifty dollars a month for the developer and investors to break even. Even households that afford these prices, those with incomes of ninety-five thousand dollars or more, are unlikely to be willing to pay this much in downtown Altoona, not yet. In order to lower the average rent to a more manageable eighteen fifty a month and to increase the willingness of future renters to be tenants along Twelfth Avenue, the developers seek the following. A deal with the Altoona Parking Authority to purchase a lot for only ten thousand dollars to keep acquisition costs low. The public parking spaces would not be replaced, they would be absorbed by surplus capacity in the Altoona Transportation Center garage. A five-million-dollar economic development grant from a combination of city, county, and state sources to support downtown revitalization. For the state to participate, half the grant would be covered by the city and county. A commitment from the city of Altoona to invest one million dollars in bond sales and the street skate upgrades on Twelfth Avenue between Seventeenth and Eleventh Streets. And a commitment from the city and Penn Dock to convert Twelfth and Eleventh avenues through downtown into two-way streets by twenty thirty to promote walkability. What we would get, ninety-four additional market-rate rental units in the heart of downtown, putting ten million dollars in annual household income, close to downtown restaurants and services. Housing to attract and retain young adults, healthcare workers, and emptyness seniors. A twenty-five and a half million dollar development added to the tax rules. Downtown street skates that are more visually appearing, appealing, and pedestrian-friendly. And again, all I've decided that this is, I think. You say yes or no for the proposal?
I say no.
Okay, and why?
Number one, you're gonna be placing a lot of people for parking, even though you're providing people parking that are going to rent there, but where are the other people gonna park? You're gonna be back in the same situation you were in the sixties, where businesses had to leave downtown and go to malls because the downtown could not accommodate the parking. Number two, you talk about, oh, it's gonna increase business for restaurants. It won't, because those apartments are gonna have their own kitchens. Those people are gonna feel more comfortable eating at home than they will, because one of the big factors is, if you look down at the towers, those elderly in there, they all stay in their apartments. They don't go to the restaurants. You know, Sheffery's, remember Sheffery's? It's right across there. And none of the retirees would go over there to eat because they, they had their own kitchens. So I think, you know, it, it sounds nice, but I don't think that it all works. And the parking garage is great, except for people like me that have trucks, can't get them in there. So where am I gonna park?
Ignore the fact.
Ignore the fact.
On that picture, there's a big white building. Originally, that was a parking lot, a parking for Penaltto. Glint City managed to get that and use that parking for the residents and give them covered parking somehow to get parking to the people downtown underneath it or vice versa.
I mean, they've had quite a few studies for downtown, and one of the big things that keeps coming out of it is downtown needs a parking garage. They've said that for years, but because of the, the investment, the city doesn't want to get into it.
I have a question, a twenty-seven, twenty-seven million dollar development adds back to the tax rules. How long is, how many years does it take to pay back that one million and five million dollar grant?
Well.
Is there a formula for that or?
Depends on, on your charge for taxes.
Yeah, whether it's a grant or whether it's an actual loan too.
It also depends on what the value of the property is afterwards. Just because they're putting twenty-seven and a half million dollars into it, doesn't mean that's what the assessed value will be at the end.
Yeah.
Like they're saying, take the final assessed value and then you multiply it by your tax rate. They don't give you what you're getting every year and then you just add to that. Of course, you have other factors that play into there as well. Not every dollar you're gonna have to charge for taxes on that, just kind of directly pay off that one immediately.
Just a question, not, not a comment, but question uh on, on the parking issue. What is the status of that garage slash parking area that's across, on Twelfth, Twelfth Street there? That's part of the Gables.
Still condemned.
Still condemned. So that's, that has to, that has to come down, be, it can't be rehabbed or anything, it has to come down.
I'm not sure where that stands.
Because that's, you know, that's, I, I agree with your, I see what you're saying is that a lot of things that really defeats doing anything in some of these downtowns is have to go and search for a parking space.
Well, that's what killed it in the sixties.
Yeah, and that seems to be an issue, but no matter, it's still an issue, but I, again, uh, yeah, I.
I mean, I'd love to see that kind of development downtown, but.
And that, whether that particular site is the proper site for it is another question. It would be an issue. Is that parking, is that space more valuable for, as available parking for the downtown or is another development? I don't know. I don't know.
You're leading me into the second part of the writing there. You're saying you hope to see that kind of development downtown. The second part there is what would move it to a yes.
Ignore the fact that you can build a parking garage, two parking garages, leave the existing one, build one on top and keep going up, so. And anything dealing with it downtown is a study in desperation of trying to save it. And as Nick says, some of the things are ridiculous, some of them are not. It's just a constant struggle to figure a way to be, to have it continue, even at the rate it is now. Right now, the greatest asset is, what's his name? Chris Cook. It's Chris Cook's development, but he may be overextending himself, so I don't know. It's, the only thing you can do is watch him, hope that something good comes out of it.
Well, even if you take a look at the Brett Building, how many years did it take for that to get, you know, people living in that? I had one of the very first apartments in there. And it sat, I think it was me and two other families that lived in there for years. The place was empty. And it was all because they had this little parking area. And the rents were outrageous because, you know, the owner, he had quite a bill to pay. So you had high rents and insufficient parking, so it wasn't, it sat there for years. I mean, that, that development had to have lost money, you know. I mean, now, I think they have more of the apartments rented, and they were really nice apartments, you know, except for the fact that they were all electric and your electric bill was well over $300 a month. Because in the summer, you had air conditioning, and in the winter, you had electric heat. And those, those high ceilings, you know, unless you had a balloon, you didn't get any heat on the floor. But, I mean, I love the idea, but there's a lot of issues there that killed downtown in the 60s that needs to be looked at before something like that would go through.
I see the first question asked is what makes other downtowns successful in this day and age? And it's, you know, it depends on the, I guess, the catch base and the people that come into the town. Like in bigger cities, you get more people and you get more shopping opportunities. The thing that makes a downtown come alive is people. So how do you bring people into the downtown? How do you get?
Well, I can tell you one development. You build a parking garage, or on the first floor, you have commercial, and the parking's up above.
That's a, that's a concept.
There, you're actually combining two things, two functions. You're accomplishing the parking issue, plus you're also bringing in the commercial.
I think one of the model communities, I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
One of the model communities or communities I think is very, very successful is Morristown, New Jersey. It's just like our, just like, you know, our small towns here. They figured out, you know, how to build parking behind all the shops, you know, so that there's a continuous tree-lined parking lots, you know, that go behind all the shops so people can come into town and go directly from their cars through a little alleyway onto, you know, into an active street. That, that makes that successful, and I think it could be done in communities like Holidays burg, for example. Like for, if all the, if all the park, if all the lots were cleared somewhat behind the commercial building strips, then people will be able to park there. And it works very similar to the way Logan Town Center works. People wanna be able to drive up and walk down, you know, through an arcade of buildings and go shopping. So if we could make Holidaysburg, for example, or Altoona similar to the concept of Logan Town Center and bring in more higher quality, you know, maybe even name brand stores, you know, then people will come in there and that will generate traffic. So my, my theory is that it's pedestrian traffic that will make the downtown come alive, and I'm not sure that by building this apartment building, that's gonna generate more pedestrian traffic. The idea is to bring people outside the community and to create more pedestrian traffic. So I would, I propose, you know, for this development. And I'd say, what would I do to move it? I'd say, create linear parking structures, easy access, and bring in more, to take that grant money to bring in Buzzco's downtown or, you know, Dick's Sporting Goods downtown or some, all the same kind of shops that are in Logan Town Center.
Well, there again, if you look at Logan Town Center, what does Logan Town Center have?
Well, whatever it has, brings people, it has barges, right? So we would just do it in reverse. Instead of having a central parking lot, we could rework our communities to have parking lots behind the buildings.
Now you're faced with another problem when you talk about downtown, topography.
Topography.
You're gonna be building parking lots where?
Well, I, I don't know.
I mean, you got, you got streets that go like this.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
I think part of the, part of the, when you start to look at, when I look at a downtown's things, I look at two things. One, okay, there has to be parking, but in order, in order to utilize the parking, for me, for coming from an outsider, there has to be a reason to go downtown, to need the parking.
See, see, as an engineer. This is where you're good, because you're thinking of what brings me to downtown, but where do I park?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
But if you, if you can develop something that combines both of those.
Yeah, but the issue I'm saying is, it depends, it seems to me, whether you do what you're saying, and that's, that seems like a fine, that seems like a good solution to this issue, but it's like, what comes first? The cart or the horse, you know? It's, you gotta, you gotta do.
Well, it's kinda like the filter dream.
Yeah, you gotta.
You build it and they will come.
And that's, but that's gotta take, somebody's gotta step up.
Well, somebody's gonna have to have some vision.
Well, and they're gonna have to have some money too.
Well, well. Once you got the vision, I'm sure you could probably find the money somewhere.
Well, I mean, that's been the issue I've said right along with, if you start to look at some of these small communities, and everybody pours the fact that we're tearing down all these historic buildings. And what I, what I look at, when I look at a historic building in a town, say like Tyrone or something like that, I look at it and I say, well, the municipalities don't have the funds or the access to funds that are gonna let them do a redevelopment. So it has to be, the only way that some of these buildings get redeveloped and historic buildings get redeveloped in a small town is that somebody comes in and has, has the vision and the money to do it and has figured out a way to make money out of it, that he can make a profit. And so if he can, if I, if I'm gonna, if I'm a small, if I'm a developer and I'm coming into a town and I wanna preserve a historic building, what my bottom line is, okay, that's a great thing to save that building, but I've gotta find a way that I can make it pay.
Well, the only problem is when developers come in, the last thing they're gonna look at is the historical building. Because the regulations on historical buildings and the money you have to put into it just to keep that historical view is incredible.
Well, I know Tyrone has lost at least three buildings that way. That have very nice buildings historically, but, and one of them, I know, went through about at least three or four different owners trying to figure out how to do it.
Well, the only way you're gonna be able to do something like that.
Somebody has to figure a way to make money, if they can make a profit.
The only way you're gonna be able to do that is if the government is going to insist that that's a historical building, then the government should put up the funds to maintain that as a historical building and let the developer develop the inside. And then that way, the developer isn't burdened with that cost, although the taxpayer.
Well, they give tax credits for doing historic preservation.
I think we're, I think we're moving into the item two here on the agenda, kind of body full, but I think.
I wanna add something to downtown. One of the things that destroyed downtown was Penn Dock. The expressway to Nowhere, which would close down to 40 miles an hour and allowed parking on one of the lanes, you would have an improvement. And you could also remove all the, all the underground territories that would, that had been chained off to keep the bones out.
Well, if that would have been continued out the way it was supposed to have been, you would have lost a athletic field. Cause it was, it was supposed to go clean out to Mill Run. So you would have lost that beautiful baseball diamond and stuff, all that would have been gone.
I think.
They, they actually developed that project because of the coal trucks. They wanted to get the coal trucks and that from going down, you know, 36 and that into downtown and getting stuck under the coal burning stuff.
I think we need to move ahead. I think, I, I'm, I'd like to say continue, and I think we can, but I think we need, so this meeting doesn't go on forever, we need to move it.
Second proposal, again, theoretical. Nickherbacher, now president and made a fortune in 2017 when she sold her share of a Silicon Valley company that specializes in artificial intelligence research. Since then, she has used a portion of her windfall to finance one of her passions, fixing up old buildings. With several successful projects in California and New Jersey under her belt, she's turned her attention to her hometown and the Nickherbacher Historic District, which she has always admired as a proposed project. Over the past two years, the developer has signed purchase options with owners of 30 row houses in the Nickherbacher Historic District, where roughly 30% of the property's there. 60% of the purchase options are with landlords. The developer proposes to execute the purchase options over a three-year period and spend an average of $125,000 per town, per row house on historically sensitive renovations to make the row houses marketable for middle and upper-income homebuyers. The renovation cost will be held down by her ability to group the projects and achieve economies of scale. The projected cost, including acquisition, is $5.5 million. For this plan to be even modestly profitable, developer will need renovated row houses to sell for at least $125,000, which is affordable to households earning at least $75,000. But the developer recognizes that these households are unlikely to have confidence in this neighborhood and to pay that much unless other improvements are made in the streets and nearby public spaces. We ended that, and this is the Nickherbacher area. Six avenues up there on the right, going out towards like 84 Lumber and all. The road at the bottom that goes off to the right goes up the hill, ABCD is down, sort of off the edge there. The road to the left goes out to Logan Boulevard. So that's the Nickherbacher. Right about where the six is, is where the Nickherbacher sign is. What we need to give, make the neighborhood and surroundings more attractive to homebuyers. Developer's holding off and executing her purchase options until she has secured the following commitments from the city. Repave the streets surrounding the neighborhood's row houses and fix broken sidewalks, plant trees where possible, invest in better street lighting, and make other necessary upgrades to outdated infrastructure. These improvements are projected cost $1 million. For the Penn Dock, make the intersection of Sixth Avenue and Burgum and adjacent areas along Sixth Avenue more pedestrian-friendly and aesthetically pleasing with better crosswalks, lighting, and beautification. These projects are expected to cost around $0.5 million. Invest $1.5 million at Highland Park, only one block to the south, to improve pass facilities, lighting, signage, stone walls, and tree plant, tree plants. What they would get. 30 historic row houses that are renovated and offer unique products for homebuyers and the regional housing market. Greater sense of confidence for property owners within a quarter mile of these investments. Improve streets and sense of place in a historic neighborhood that abuts off the neighborhoods in the south. Major investment in your Altoona's best neighborhood park. Yes or no?
Yes.
And why?
And I'll tell you why, especially my rant last month about the city needing to invest in its infrastructure. You know, that's what it needs to do. It needs to invest in its infrastructure and have developments like this go forward. That would be a big boom for that, for that neighborhood, to get them, you know, all redone like that. Because that's the only way you can do the Nickherbackers. You have to have that whole section to, to complete it. But I think that the city needs to start stepping up with these projects and start investing in their infrastructure.
I like the idea of upgrading the Nickherbackers, cause it's a, you know, it's like a gateway, you know, structure, or structure that you see come into the city, it's highly prominent, it's historical.
Well, it does have history.
Solid houses.
It does have history, that the guy that designed them was what, from Philadelphia? You know, I mean, it, it is a historical, basically, to me, it's a historical site, you know? It's like falling water.
A few left too.
And, and we have this right here in the city, and it's a shame that it's gone to the condition it's gone. And the city shouldn't be investing in. Like they shouldn't be investing in all the city, but, you know. I like the idea.
Number three, P. Costco. Costco is America's 12th fastest, 12th, 12th fastest growing retailer in 2023 and is hoping to build a wholesale club in either Altoona or State College. Location would be its first between Harrisburg and Pittsburgh. Competition is close. State College has higher income levels, which is appealing to Costco. Altoona, meanwhile, has potential to draw from a wider market territory that includes State College, Johnstown, Indiana, and a number of smaller markets. Costco's choice will come down to the willingness of the host community to facilitate a smooth and most effective development process. First project. Costco's Altoona option involves land between West Plank Road and Logan Boulevard and an area just inside the city line now occupied primarily by a First Energy Operations Center. First Energy sees this as an opportunity to right-size and modernize its footprint by selling and then moving to a smaller property in terms of all the attention. Following site acquisition and clearance, Costco proposes to build a 168,000 square-foot wholesale club towards West Plank Road with 850 parking spaces, 16 pump gas stations. Of the parking spaces, 30 will be accessible to electric charging kiosks. A portion of the site closest to Logan Boulevard will include a 20,000 square-foot RAI co-op location in the air and outdoor apparel and space for two other small retail service outlets that have yet to be identified. RAI also intends to join Costco if it chooses State College over Altoona. This is where we're looking. The triangular parcel on the left is where, where East Side Plaza. Kind of dimmed the arid topography and left the site a little brighter there where the arrow is, and that's where we're looking, it goes out to, it's right behind the new Barnes Shopping's there, shopping area there. That's where you're looking. What we need to give. Manage its development costs and risks. Costco's real estate subsidiary is seeking the following from the city of Altoona and its partners. If all three commitments can be made, Altoona will have slightly better than even odds of getting the project. 100% coverage of demolition and clearance costs estimated to be around $1.5 million. First Energy would cover any necessary environmental cleanup as part of its real estate association with Costco. 100% coverage of new infrastructure to serve the site, including intersection upgrades at West Plank Road and Culver Street, a new right-hand turn lane northbound on West Plank, and coverage of all necessary sewer and water upgrades. Estimated cost $1.5 million. 100% abatement of city, county, and school property taxes for the first five years after project's completion, and a 50% abatement for years six to 10. Total forgiven property tax revenues are estimated to be $2.25 million. What the community would get. Two marquee retailers to add to the region's offerings, which would conveniently serve locals and draw additional shoppers from all directions. Redevelopment of a few aging properties on underutilized land next to the I-99 Main Road interchange. A boost in local income and sales taxes, 200 new jobs, full and part-time, with average pay of $20 an hour. Again, hypothetical, just emphasize that. Yes or no?
No.
And why?
We have retail space that's setting vacant, nobody wants to utilize it. You know, so you can build whatever you wanna build, but it's not gonna succeed because now everybody's buying on the internet. A lot of your major stores are closing because of that. So, I mean, you got the Sears space set over there totally vacant. Why can't that be utilized?
They need bigger space than that, don't they? Sears building. Not sure how many it is.
100.
This is 158. I think the size of this, there's nothing in Altoona that would accommodate their needs.
Well, I don't know, the mall. Well, I don't know, the mall's pretty big.
All right.
And the mall, and the mall's not as full as it used to.
Yeah, I'd say.
Isn't this?
Can't tell you the last time.
Yeah, I was gonna say, this is a very poorly, poor drainage, very flood prone area. Additional development there, especially development of that size would be.
Challenging.
To say the least.
You had to build a big tank.
Well, I mean, there we go again.
Put a tank in the ground and build a building on top of a tank.
That was the problem, the people behind with the brush run, the people behind the behind Logan Valley Mall, that neighborhood back there with the flooding. It was that we put all that previous parking space on that.
Well, that and they they closed in the stream.
Yeah, and that's that's a.
My grandfather, when that first sold, could have bought that land for fifty cents an acre. The reason why my grandmother talked him out of it was because it was all swamp.
Yeah. That's the way my dad worked worked at down at Bedford or down at Breezewood on the Turnpike in the thirties. He said he could have bought the whole damn thing down there for five thousand bucks, but he didn't have five thousand bucks. He could have done Breezewood for that kind of money at that point and he didn't have the money.
Aside from development in that area specifically, I think generally the idea is good. I think bringing those two businesses to the area would be huge. I I'm not sure if you all are familiar with REI or Costco, but they are huge, huge retailers nationwide. And I think that, like, people, I I live in Johnstown, people drive to Costco in Pittsburgh just like two hours to go there. If they, and same with REI, I think if we had something like that in the area, it would be a really huge attractor or an additional attractor. I do think, and especially a boost, as it says, in jobs, well-paying jobs too. However, I do have concerns specifically with such a large development in that location. It looks like impervious surface already. I don't know what the site is currently or if it said that, but I just, my concerns aren't with bringing the development here. It would only be with the location that was chosen and that's for stormwater reasons.
So the city's gonna spend how much? Could you scroll down a little bit, please? The city's gonna spend three million?
Three million and lose two and a half and two and four million in taxes.
Give it, give a, we're gonna lose two and four million.
And give away two and a quarter million in taxes.
For five, for ten years, basically.
Over ten years.
Over ten.
And why? And we would, why would the city want to invest in this? Just to make it more convenient for them to, for traffic and to get in and out of the building?
More foot traffic and provide the jobs.
Provide jobs.
I think in this scenario specifically, it's a, it's competitive. The alternative is not either they develop here or they don't. The alternative is that traffic goes to State College because Costco and it seemed REI had an agreement with Costco that they'll go where they go. Well, if Costco chooses to go to State College, that draws everything to State College rather than drawing it to Altoona. And so Altoona would lose out on everybody leaving Altoona, taking their business from Altoona, driving to State College to go to these places. So I think there is incentive overall for the city to want to do that over having, if they're competing with State College in that way.
Well, State College gonna lose the five and a half million?
But these people coming from State College are also spending money in restaurants and other places too, right? So we get more, we get sales tax from all this. We know what that equates to. Do we get sales tax? So we, all we're getting is people coming into the area. I think it's a good thing that there's more opportunities for people to shop because I think that was one of our big drawbacks for many years when people wouldn't come to this area because there wasn't, there wasn't enough places for them to buy things. On the flip side, like, how many consumer products can we absorb here, you know? And are these really good paying jobs? And we can't really fill the jobs we have, you know, right now? And does anybody want to move to this area because they would get a retail store, you know, job that pays very, pays a lot less? I don't know if that's. Then I think these corporations are so big that they can afford, you know, to do the improvements or whatever they need to make their shops work better. So I don't, I'm kind of on the fence. I'd say that would be, I don't think it would be a good investment for the community.
I look at it philosophically, doing nothing is exactly guaranteed that's what will happen.
Doing nothing.
Another way of saying that is nobody will invest in you unless you invest in yourself.
Good question.
I mean, if we were looking at, you know, this site and we didn't have other places that were around here.
Yeah.
But we have other places that are around here.
There's other K-Mart, Russell.
I think.
Yeah, K-Mart.
Yeah.
I think, not the K-Mart. I think though.
Well, the K-Mart building would have to be torn down and the new building would have to be built.
I think the mall, as your previous suggestion, was a great idea. I actually disagree with the notion that people are going online now for the convenience of it. While that is the case, I think since post-pandemic, people have been like itching to get back out there, to go out and go shopping, go for a shopping trip again. But they're finding that these retail stores are really not having a lot in store because everything's being carried online. So I think encouraging more traffic into the mall, which is very sad and depleting right now, I think would be the kind of.
Well, there's another factor that you're not calculating into your theory. And it's Target has brought this up. They're they're closing a lot of their stores because of thefts. And a lot of companies are looking at having stores out there in certain areas. Creates a lot of theft form and a lot of loss. See, that's another factor that we gotta also realize. And for the city to be putting up five and a half million for something like that when we have space available, I think is the wrong idea. Granted, Costco is maybe a wonderful company, who would love to have them here, who would love to have the people. But I don't think, you know, the taxpayers losing five and a half million to bring them here is a good idea.
Part me. Three proposals presented here are very different. They each would require specific public gives, ranging from three million to six million. The gets are harder to find. As individuals rank the three proposals in order if they're worthy of this republic's support from most worthy to least worthy. For the whole group, which proposal is ranked highest by the most people.
The Nickherbacher was a very positive thing.
I'd say Nickherbacher.
Yeah, everybody liked the Nickherbacher. What about the other two? Are apartments downtown or are they possible for the, yeah, possible, sorry, Costco, I haven't moved.
Hmm. Yeah.
Well, one downtown gives us something we don't have, which is housing.
Downtown has housing.
Huh?
Downtown has housing, matter of fact.
Gives us more housing, which is one of our.
Ninety-three market rate units is unbelievable. That's massive, massive growth.
Yeah, I mean, and and that's great.
That's one of our issues of.
That's great, but there's issues. There's there's issues when you bring it in.
Those issues in stepping out this door here too.
Well, especially if you can get out the door.
Yeah, well, I'm.
We couldn't get in.
But that's why I said that that way. But yeah, I mean, I think that's that's something that desperately needs in every study we've done, is that kind of thing. I know parking's a big issue. We got us, we got the railroad on one side and the hill on the other side, so we can't go that much ways. We have to go out farther that way. And you think about that, there is places to put parking out that way.
The first part, you mean hundreds?
Well, that's two.
Yeah, two.
Yeah.
Well, that would be a problem in downtown.
I still, every time we say about downtown, I still still argue that the reason you got, the reason to do things or have things downtown is the cart and horse. If you're gonna attract people in, they gotta have a reason to come in. And I mean, that's kind of the cart and the horse type thing. Which one do you do first? And I think you're right.
Thing of it is, if you're gonna, if you're gonna attract people to come in, you're gonna have to have someplace for them to park. You gotta, so if they have no place to park, they're gonna come in and go out.
Yeah.
And so it's a, it's a question, it's a, what do you do first?
Yeah, which comes first, the chicken or the egg?
You gotta, whatever it is, you gotta take, we gotta take a leap somewhere. But I think if you can come up with a development that takes care of both situations comfortably, then I think you got a winner.
The downtown one, you know, we just have to find parking and is that impossible to answer that?
Well, it's not impossible, it's just that the municipality doesn't want to put up the funding.
Oh, they're they're starting to step forward here, so we have to realize that we're trying to help and step forward.
Yeah, okay, let's. I think I I'm saying it looks like two is the clear winner, people like that and probably it's, it's, I'm looking at saying it's, it's a tie between three, one and three. And what you, what do you do? I'm not, I I think if I had to put a preference on it, I would put the downtown above the development on that site, particularly the site they're at. Not not so much the, what they plan to do, but.
There's very enough space there.
Yeah, it's a lot of space and I just question how you move ahead or which one you do first. Well, that's, that's, I think, I agree that there seems to be, seems to be there's a lot of retail source and a lot of, a lot of space available. But it seems like some of it is also, when you're looking, it's not the, it's, it's not in the right niche, if you want to say that. It's in the, you know, we're looking at that middle housing group that we're lacking and some of the other things. But again, some of the things like, how do you, how do you start? Where do you target that? How do you target some of these, these areas?
I think the downtown project would be a go if they wouldn't focus on putting the residential in it because we have enough residential downtown. We need commercial. That's your draw. That's what gets people downtown. So if they can combine that and parking, you got a winner.
Then the residential stuff will follow.
Well, the residential stuff will follow because we have units downtown for rent. And matter of fact, they're putting in more in that new development that they're going to.
The only question is, are they, are, again, are they in the right niche, right income level type?
Well, that's gonna depend on the investment, but. That's the unfortunate side of it. All right, I think we.
I got one thing to slip in, a thirteen negative A or something. We had applied back in June or Sep- or May, sorry, September, for a stormwater planning grant. We were supposed to know in the middle of September as to whether we were funded or not. We have not yet heard as from the EPA as to whether we're funded on that. As a reminder, that would be the first step in a three-step process to update the stormwater modeling, update all the ordinances, the standards, the whole nine yards. Phase one is basically to plan on what you're gonna plan. It's a basically a five-figure grant. It identifies the different issues that are out there, the potential steps to undertake to address those issues in phase two. Phase two is the development of the model and the ordinances. That's a six-figure exercise. And then phase three is getting the ordinances adopted by all municipalities and helping them start to implement them. So once a stormwater plan is in place for a particular area, the constituent municipalities have to adopt an ordinance. And right now, the only areas that we have are the Beaver Dam Branch, which is basically Holidaysburg, Alagany, part of Blair, Altoona and part of Altoona and part of Logan. And then a very small part of the Bob's Creek, which is actually the top end of the Race Down Branch, which is essentially part of Junianna and Greenfield Townships. The rest of the county technically has no stormwater planning on it yet. And that's one of the big reasons why we applied for the grant, was to get that done. They finally reopened the funding after twenty years and it's it's time to, time to get it done.
All right. I guess we, with that, we've kind of combined twelve and thirteen there, but does any planning committee members have anything other than, anything beyond what we've talked about on the, with that altogether, altogether altitude? Any other issues there? I think, I would say one of the things we've talked about is, and we've said about making the, that some of the plight, plight issue is more of the, it's a public issue on things like street, street conditions and curbing and sidewalks and things. I would say that in Blair County and particularly get out into the smaller communities that the, one of the third rails of politics in Blair County is sidewalks, conditions of sidewalks, who's responsible for them, who maintains them, who installs them, who does what? And some of it is, is the fact that, is it the homeowner? And then if that's the case, then it devolves down to the political will of the municipality to do something, to make, make homeowner do something. And I don't, that's, like I said, that's the third rail of local politics in a lot of the small communities. Is it, that even though the sidewalks look horrible and that, the political will to make the resident do it is, is not there. And the planning funds to do it by municipality is not there. So it's a, it's a real, real problem. So I think that if, and that, that would go a long way, just addressing the sidewalk issues and the side, and the street issues, would go a long way to making a lot of these municipalities look a hundred percent better.
One of the ways to deal with a sidewalk issue is to build it publicly and charge it over a period of years to the property tax. Add it to the property tax.
And they've done, in some instances, they've done that, the only, with liens and that on properties. The only thing that I've seen that really has made people do their, do their sidewalks has been, maybe they want to upgrade, maybe they're trying, they want to do something on their own, but the, there is ordinances about what they can do and how to do it. But the only thing I've seen that really, really triggers them is if the homeowner's insurance comes through, they've had some kind of tripping episode or something on where probably somebody's fallen on their property because of the sidewalk and their homeowner's insurance comes through and says, fix your sidewalks or we're gonna cut, we're gonna cancel your insurance. And that's one of the few things I've seen that's the real, the only real stick that's made people do, do things. The rest, most of the things I've seen is most people don't want to invest. They, they think that the sidewalk is not their responsibility.
Sidewalks, if, you know, the city owns the trees and the city upheaves those sidewalks, who's, who's the problem there?
That's, that's, that's one of the issues. Property owner says, look, that's out in your right of way. You know, I don't mind taking care of it, but why do I have to replace it?
Yeah, most of that you see is trees, trees through a lot of that.
Well, yeah, like.
Yeah, and a lot of it, a lot of it.
Seventh and Eighth Streets, when they put those trees in, they put the wrong trees in and it popped up the sidewalks. And of course, the homeowner isn't going to fix it, that's an expense. Yep, you know.
Well, in particular, then the other thing is, it comes down to if it's also, if it's rental property, then the landlord, he's, he's got reblock terms to spend anymore than he has to.
Anymore, you know, a lot of the landlords are starting to set, sign these agreements with their tenants where the tenant is responsible for maintenance.
All right, well, moving right ahead, I I've said my thing on that. I think, I think, but I think that, you know, somewhere along the line, if we could just address, in the whole countywide area, if we could just address some of the sidewalk issues, it would go a long way to making things look a hell of a lot better.
That's why, you know, I've, I've always said that, you know, when we get these projects in here, we should put in, you know, put your sidewalk in.
Well, and I think that's, I think that's, I think, and I think you're right. I think it's right in the sense that you say that you do this because it's one, it's a char, it's the horse and the cart thing.
And I realize that there. And I realize that there's.
You gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, you gotta start somewhere. And I realize that, that there's areas, like out in farm areas and stuff, you're not gonna have sidewalks put in.
No.
You know, but, you know, stuff that's closer to, you know, cities and stuff, and where there's major arteries and stuff, they should have sidewalks. There should be provisions for people to walk along a highway or a roadway.
All right, let's, let's move ahead so we can get home.
Okay.
I have nothing.
Well, you, you have nothing to say.
Hey, I'm already over time.
Okay, we've got a list of upcoming events for anybody who's interested there. We also have an announcement for the, for the next meeting. If there are no, if there are no other items, I will entertain emotional adjournment. So, I'm just, we're out of here. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Do we not need a second?
Second. There it is. There it is.